Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the San Mateo Foster City School District Board Study Session. It is October 3, 2024, and we're calling the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We will start with our flag slipped. So please join me. National Legion, United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, roll call, trustee Tran. Here, trustee Kim.
Here.
And I'm here as well. Trustee Brooks is not here. Item four is approval of the agenda for tonight. Second, thank you trustee Kim for the motion and trustee Tran for the second. We'll go to item five A, public statements related to agenda items. Please limit statements to three minutes. And since this is a study session, we'll start with public comment right now, and then we'll check in again midway. And maybe again, if we have time and if there's any interest. So is there any public comment in the audience over here? Can we check on Zoom, please?
No.
No, okay. All right, item six A, extended learning.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tiffany Canares, and I'm the annex principal on special assignment. And here with my colleague Victor, we're here to talk about extended learning.
Hi, everyone. I'm Victor Town. I am a coordinator here, and I work on the expanded learning opportunity program.
All right, so tonight, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna talk about what extended learning is here in our district, what it looks like, and who provides those services, and then give you a little bit of detail on each each program and then some questions at the end. So before we kind of get started in the presentation, I just want to connect us back to our strategic plan and where extended learning fits. It's in that, and it really looks at family engagement, building block one, three, and five. So three data-informed decision-making and responsible fiscal support. Family engagement extending learning initiatives actively involves families and local organization fostering the partnerships that enhance student support and community and connections. And for data-informed decision-making, we use data to, you know, look at our program and and the activities and things we provide, but also the students, especially for ELOP, the students who are invited to to the programs. And then responsible fiscal support. Extending learning programs are funded. We want to ensure that they're funded and sustainable. So we use that. All right, so extended learning for here in San Mateo Foster City, we offer before-school, after-school, summer, and intercession learning programs that focus on developing the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs and interest of students through hands-on engaging learning experiences. And who is extended learning? So the annex is the district provided extended learning. And then we have six partners that we also work with Newton Boys and Girls Club, Homework Central, Peninsula Bridge, YMCA, and Champions. And together, we create a comprehensive network that addresses the academic, social, and emotional, physical needs of students. All right, so we're gonna get started with the annex. The annex has been around a little over thirty years, and it was started as an enterprise fund. About five years ago, we updated our mission. There the annex nurtures the academic and emotional success of students in a safe, respectful, and responsible environment. Students are well cared for by staff who are passionate about providing diverse and developmentally appropriate opportunities that enrich learning. All right, so this is kind of a snapshot of what what the annex currently looks like. We offer before-school care at sixteen sites. And we start at seven AM until the start of school. So every school starts a little bit different. That start will depend, and after-school care, we're at thirteen sites. The end of the school day to, there's two options this year, to three PM or six PM. And if you look at our annex enrollment on my left-hand side, the AM is about a hundred and fifty students for morning care and five hundred and seventy for full-time PM care. That does not include our part-time, and that's about a hundred and forty additional students. So we serve around seven hundred students total in the annex with all of our programs. Our staffing is one principal on special assignment, which is me, and I have two administrative assistants here in the office. We have seventeen lead teachers who oversee the site and twenty-five teachers and assistants to support early teachers. And recently, the last last year, we've hired high school students to come support. And we have about one high school per person, per site. We're still hiring the last few to to come on. So there will definitely be one site, and they work two to three days, and they could just really enjoy having that younger person there to be a mentor. And then when we get into programming later, we can see they're bringing some additional things to our sites. So this is an enrollment over time. AM care in the last four years, we can see a little bit of a decline, about thirty students over the last four years. And that really is, we attribute that to the change in family dynamics and situations that jobs have been more flexible, and so parents can go in a little bit later. The the people who we see using morning care are who have hard start time teachers and people who are at schools, nurses, and and things like that. And our PM care, you can see that has dropped a little bit, about a hundred and fifty students over the four years. And that started with staffing and and struggling to to maintain staff. And so that's where we've worked with, partnering with community members to bring in extra care. So when we get to all those slides, you can see we're we're set, we're actually serving substantially more than we could just serve ourselves. So I, that kind of explains that. The one thing that, and I talked about this a little bit before, we're looking at ways that we could increase our afternoon care, and some of the things that we've done, the last is brought back that PM three care so that kinders can come to care for four days a week until their older sibling comes out, so the parents don't have two pickups. And that's, that has increased, increased the annex by a hundred and fifty. We're also looking into part-time care because we know that that, some parents are interested in that. However, the one obstacle is the ratio and maintaining our seventeen to one, and then having that enough staff for that as well. All right, here's kind of a snapshot of fees for our after-school program. And our parent fees collected are about three point two million dollars. We do match with our, with the, with Newton, who is our other on-care provider, so that our fees are, and Champions, that our fees do match. And we also get funding from our ACIS grant, which is our after-school education and safety grant. Came from Prop forty-nine and provides subsidy care at four sites. Fiesta Gardens has forty spots, George Hall has forty-seven, Lead and Sunny Bray, Lead has eighty, and Sunny Bray has sixty spots. Although Boys and Girls Club are at those two sites, we still manage the fund, and that's partial, partially how they are paid. And we receive approximately four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars annually. It's renewed every three years, and we've been successful in maintaining and maintaining the number of spots that we we've had in the last five years. If you don't meet attendance requirements, you are required to drop your number spots, but we've been working really hard to make sure we keep that. And then the other subsidy is ForSE's Child Care Coordinating Council, and parents apply for that, and they get a subsidy. And we receive approximately two hundred and seven thousand dollars annually. All right, scholarships. So a couple of things about scholarships, we, you can see that we serve about two hundred kids in scholarships, and there's different types of scholarships. So full tuition scholarships are for AM and PM care, where we fund and pay for, the district pays for that. And we offer camp scholarship for our summer camp. This summer, it was about sixty-five thousand dollars. And ACIS only funds about twenty-five percent of our full tuition, so the rest, to to make the gap, is scholarship. And then ForSE covers about seventy percent of the cost to run a program. So that's kind of the cost overview there. We, the scholarships come out to about one point four million dollars. And looking at that, the parent fees pay for about a million dollars, and four hundred thousand comes from ELOP funds. Sorry. Expenses, ninety-six percent of our expense is salary. Supplies, snacks. We have, we had bought some technology this year, and we do pay for some district subscriptions for all school sites to use. One is the movie licensing and things. Right, annex programming, so our staff to student ratio has decreased this year, so we are one to seventeen, down from one to twenty that we've been for the past seven or eight years. Before-school and after-school, there's academic homework support, footsteps to brilliance, ST math, enrichment, there's art projects, there's STEM projects. And here is the STEMality and the Wonder Workshop, where we collaborated with high school districts. Some of STEMality is from Sequoia Union High School District, and they formed a group who come and bring all the materials from donations and bring everything. And they provide to high schoolers on a rotating basis. And I think they see about three sites a week and rotate throughout the the year and provide some type of STEM, STEM project. And then Wonder Workshop is what we've kind of developed internally with our high schoolers, where they do similar things, where they bring fun projects, hands-on learning to to students, sensory bottles, making thermal slime, using thermal powder, and then kind of learning about the science behind those projects as well. We have snack that's provided by the district, child nutrition every day. Camps, we have camps at all of our breaks. Our camps have shifted this year, so starting this past summer, they, the annex has moved back to our original, which was fee-based camps. We do offer scholarships that do seem to make sure that we can just fill our camp and provide that opportunity for students. So we started that with this summer, but we're going to continue that fall, November. We'll have two days in winter because we get out on that Wednesday, so we'll have that Thursday, Friday, and then spring break. They're done by themes, so fall is, fall camp will be a fall theme. We'll go to the pumpkin patch during the summer. They have adventurous, Great America, Santa Cruz, and sports complex and things like that. And then they have group enrichment activities, group games, Legos, arts and crafts, crafts, cooking projects. We saw some smores in summer, making bear smores. I think that was our camping theme week. If that's for the annex, then we'll talk a little bit about YMCA, a community partner at Fiesta Gardens. They serve forty-two students, thirty-five full-time and seven part-time. Similarly, they have homework support, enrichment, outside time. Camps, they also have camps, fall, Thanksgiving, winter, spring, and summer. Very similar field trips, enrichment activities, and then they have the recreational games. They also provide snack, the district provides snack to make sure that we meet federal and California state guidelines.
All right, I'll jump in right now. I am a coordinator overseeing the expanded learning opportunities programs for our district. It's an honor to have the opportunity to share some of our work with you this evening. As a nation, as a state, as a district, we've been working to address gaps in learning loss. The expanded learning opportunities programs, which is ELOP for short, was handed from, was hatched from the federal and state funds to mitigate learning loss stemming from the pandemic. ELOP offers supplemental instruction and support for students' academic and social emotional needs in programs that offer engaging learning, learning experiences in a positive school climate. ELOP is a multi-year state grant, and this year for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have five million, three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for our district. For the San Mateo Foster City School District, we have five ELOP partners, as Tiffany mentioned, Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula, Champions, Homework Central, Newton, and Peninsula Bridge. And they help to run some of our after-school, intercession, and summer programs. This is a summary sheet of their costs and their locations. And then I'm gonna go into a little more detail with each program now. So the Boys and Girls Club pro, program has been a partner for us at Lead, San Mateo Park, and Sunny Bray. They serve over four hundred and fifty of our students. Some of their academic supports include the Power Hour, BTCP Reads, K-5 Tutoring, and of course, homework support. For enrichment, they offer mind works, play works, art in action, clubs, and sports leagues. They actually have two sports leagues during the year. They have, in the fall, they have soccer league, and in the spring, they have basketball league. For social emotional learning, SEL, they offer second step. And this past summer, they ran the after-school portion of our ELOP summer school. We served almost four hundred students with Fun Fridays, Carnival Days, Town Falls, and Students of the Week. Champions has focused on our middle school grades. This year, they are working at Abbott Middle School, and they serve about sixty students. While they focus primarily on homework support, for enrichment, they do art, math, and science. Last year, Champions supported in all our intercession camps, Fall Camp, Turkey Camp, and Spring Camp. They hosted three to four classrooms for some of our ELOP intercession camp siblings and focused on footsteps to brilliance, ST math, and levered math. Homework Central is a program at Baywood, Laurel, San Mateo Park, and Sunny Bray. They are serving about two hundred students in grades two through five. They focus on homework completion, reading, journaling, literacy, Xern, ST math support, footsteps to brilliance, and two literacy classes for second and third graders at Laurel and Baywood. For enrichment, they offer arts and crafts, science activities, curiosity class visits, peopleology class visits, outdoor play, group games, and read alouds. Their program brings in volunteers so that they can tap the power of the village to raise the children. Newton is at Bayside Academy, Laurel, Beach Park, Brewer Island, and Baywood. I do want to make a note, I made a minor adjustment on the Canada depth to avoid confusion because on the original sub slide, I included Beach Park and Brewer Island. But for our ELOP program, our focus this evening, Newton is serving ELOP-funded students at Bayside and Laurel only. At Baywood, Beach Park, and Brewer Island, while Newton has programs there, they are not currently serving any ELOP-funded students at those sites. At the same time, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Newton Center for offering scholarships to many of our San Mateo Foster City District students at these schools who qualify based upon similar criteria as what the district uses for ELOP eligibility. Newton is currently serving a hundred and seven ELOP-funded students with forty more students funded on Newton Center scholarships. Newton offers a conscientious and fun academic environment to help the children in our communities form a lifetime habit of successful learning. They extend learning outside the classroom through hands-on experiences and project-based activities that support the child's academic excellence, social emotional learning, and personal growth. Beyond helping students with completing homework, footsteps to brilliance, and ST math, Newton offers enrichment activities in science, engineering, three D printing, coding, and scratch in Python languages, public speaking, debate, journaling, cooking, sewing, mindfulness, art, chess, active play, and field trips. They are hosting our Fall Camp, and this past summer hosted a summer program at Brewer Island that served ninety-three ELOP-funded students and thirty-eight more students funded on Newton Center scholarships for a hundred and thirty-one total. Peninsula Bridge offers some of our historically marginalized students a thirteen-year commitment that greatly increases each student's opportunities for success in school, life, and career. They have a two-afternoon program each week throughout the school year and a special summer session that supports students in design thinking, STEAM, heritage ELA novel study, persuasive speech, college and career exploration, and financial literacy. Their program can be life-changing, guiding and supporting students into and through the college process, and even setting them up with internships before they graduate from college. Finally, ELOP Summer School this year allowed the district to serve just under four hundred students per day from June twentieth through July nineteenth. We had two principals, Megan Murch and Lauren Long, teachers in our district, and they were outstanding. They led a team of forty-one staff and forty-one staff and focused the curriculum around Paxton Patterson STEM, ST math, levered math, Lego Lab, and PE. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our two amazing community service specialists, Claudia and Margarita. Oh, my. For all the programs I've mentioned and more, they are the connection between the district and the families, and they both have helped support the implementation of these programs from early in the day to late into the evening. They establish trusting relationships with our families and assess their needs and advocate on their behabings. I could not do this work without them. At this point, I'd like to invite them both up to share a bit about the family engagement work as it pertains to extended learning.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor for me to be here. As a community service specialist, we support the entire school district, including ELOP. From a more social perspective, our work involves providing support to all families by acting like a counselor and educator for parents. By offering guidance to parents and emphasizing the importance to decoration and quality in attending school, we can positively impact the life of these families. We are dedicated to provide service for the specific and unique needs of each student and their family. Our goal is to promote academic progress among our students and ensure they feel valued and their families are treated with empathy and respect. As immigrants who learn English as an adult, I understand the fear that parents can face in a new country. That's why I believe that as CSSs, we are building a community of trust and support between the district, schools, and families. In all our programs, including the ELOP. Also, I want to share, like a single mom, it was so hard for me to, you know, to come to this country. But thank you to all these kind of programs, like after-school programs, summer programs. I raised my daughter by myself, and now she wins, wins a scholarship in the more prestigious school in San Francisco, and she's attending that. Also, she is, she is below two Peninsula Bridge that helped us through all this process. We have the commitment for thirteen years, and it's amazing to have that kind of opportunities. It's an honor to working for me here at the district and share what I passed through all these years and support our families. Our families faces a lot of financials, economics, a lot of challenge. But it's, it's a pleasure, like I give her any advice or help with the kids, and they feel very comfortable when they hear in Spanish, and they feel like someone close or somewhere family-related or someone. They feel like at home. Thank you so much.
So my name is Claudia Calabrese, and I'm also a community specialist here at the school district. My favorite part of the job is that one-on-one that we get to, you know, talk to the families. We get to call them, we get to explain our programs. For example, when Margarita was talking about Peninsula Bridge, you know, Peninsula Bridge wanted to do a Zoom meeting so our families could learn about the program. But we felt as, you know, immigrants, that we needed to meet in person. So we set up meetings so we could see the Zoom together, but we could be here to answer questions in Spanish, and Margarita could give her firsthand experience of Peninsula Bridge. So I mean, if that meeting was very successful, we were able to enroll a lot of students, and I believe it's gonna change their lives. They will be able to go through this program for thirteen years and have coaches and tutoring and, you know, help with getting into college. They will continue the work in high school and beyond. So I just enjoy that we can talk to these families, that we can show them the time to explain programs, that we treat them with respect, that maybe not everyone would think to call these families. In the past, we used to just send out emails, but with our new positions, we get to actually invite them. We get to actually talk to them and and explain. There are times that a lot of these families are working, and, you know, we ask for five minutes so we can help them with the applications because they don't have the time, they're working so much, or they don't know, you know, technology as well as as they could. And we're that bridge so that we can help them. It's just a great privilege to be able to do that for these families, so that they can have opportunities that they might not have. So I'm very proud to work for this district and have these programs available. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Claudia. Thank you so much. And just to share, my family also came as immigrants, and we were very poor when we were young. And we never had CSSs when I was growing up, especially CSSs who spoke our language. So as a result, there are so many opportunities now in this district that we have and make available and really market to our families that I never had. But with liaisons like this, like what we have, it would have reached my parents because my parents were like, you know, what is this? It costs too much, it's too scary, you're gonna get hurt. You know, this is not something we're gonna take advantage of, and they didn't know about it. But Claudia and Margarita, they call, they text, they go, they make home visits, they reach out and have people come in person to these meetings, so it's been an outstanding experience, so thank you.
Finally, I am grateful to Tiffany. Finally, I'm grateful to Tiffany Canares and her annex team, especially Terry and Leslie. I started working with that ELO program just over a year ago, and they, along with Superintendent Ochoa, all the district leadership, the district departments, the school leaders, the staff, and ELOP partners, they've been nothing but supportive. The work of ELOP touches and connects so many departments, from school sites to human resources, food services to MNO, transportation to nursing, and many, many more. I'm so grateful to be part of the San Mateo Foster City School District family. The work of public education is not easy, especially in these times, and together, we do make a positive difference, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Why don't we just, questions, comments, everything all at once discussion? Intimate group. I just wanted to start, and thank you both for the for the presentation. This is, you know, a lot of great information, and it's nice to kind of hear about all of the different programs that are having. that are having, happening at all of our different school sites, like before school, after school, during breaks, and all of that kind of stuff. So thank you. And I did want to thank Margarita and Claudia for everything that you do. I just, I think about like how confusing and complicated it is to just navigate schools and kids, like just on a day-to-day basis, and then to think about families who don't speak English or parents who didn't go to school here, so they're not familiar with everything. And so I just appreciate what you're doing to make everybody feel welcome and comfortable and kind of remove that like scariness of it and also do it with respect. And I just think about kids and if they're like, they can't, they can't navigate this on their own if their parents don't speak the language or they're busy working. So what you're doing is just so important to make sure that kids are not missing out on opportunities that are going to help them. So just really want to thank you both for everything you do.
We're just thankful to have the opportunity in this district to have all these programs.
All right, let's dive in.
Yeah, I mean, I want to echo that. I mean, my parents are also immigrants and, you know, I definitely didn't have anything like this, and I'm, you know, I was just lucky to have a much older sister. So she kind of like figured it out, and then like I learned from her, but a lot of kids don't have that. And, you know, so I think it's just wonderful that we're able to kind of guide these kids all the way through their, you know, their academic career and set them up for success. So it's just like really wonderful. I also, you know, I just think a lot about, you know, the relief, I think, for parents to know that their kids are somewhere safe. I know that last year I spoke with one parent who was, you know, was worried about, you know, having her kid at a different place or like having to leave her kid at home or, you know, just being worried about like losing their job, but also their kid's safety. And so it's just wonderful that for a lot of our families that really need it, that they're able to access that. I'm sure it makes a huge difference in terms of stress and like financial, you know, their financial situation. I just, I just know that this has a lot of like positive ripple effects. So thank you so much for all this work. I had a question about the, so the annex, sorry, the, this is the one with the annex at the bottom, right before the Y. So the camps, was, is this what we were doing last year? Is this different? Like, because I see that there's a winter camp, which I don't think, do we have?
Yeah, so winters, no.
Okay.
So this year our camps are kind of moving back. We're separating kind of from the ELOP. So before, we were doing them together. And this year, we're, we are separating. Winter camp is dependent on the calendar and how many days and twelve-month employee calendars. So this year, we have twelve-month employees who work those extra two days. So, and I thought, Wednesdays kind of short days, so we decided to offer a camp for those two days.
So then, we, so you said that previously it was together, but is, are they now separated because we have these other after-school programs that are like during the year?
So camp was, Annex Run Camp, kind of pre-pandemic, if you will, on their own before, and then when the pandemic and we were coming out of that and kind of trying to find our way and what was, what was going to work, we kind of joined together. We started the first fall camp. It was two years ago. It was going to be at Fiesta, and then Superintendent Ochoa came to me and was like, hey, let's, let's, you have the staff, so let's add some more kids there. And then it just kind of grew and ballooned. It was like a forty, forty kids as a camp, and I think that first one was over a hundred or just about a hundred, and then it just continued to grow. And that was successful, so we can, and that was like the start of, like, ELOP was just like just coming about. And so then we, that was so successful, we kind of continued it. And then when the ELOP funds came, then we kind of moved towards that, and we did it together. But there is still a need for paid camp, and our partners were able to help us out with the after-school piece. Last, last summer, we didn't, two thousand twenty-three, we offered extended care. So our, our, our staff would support summer school, and then we stayed for extended care. And this year, because we were running our own, and Boys and Girls.
Okay, so I guess we're just trying to make sure I understand because I know that there were some summer school programs, and I think it was like, there were some were for a couple of weeks, and then there was like a second session. Are we talking about the same thing, or is that totally separate? Like where it was like folk, like it was by invitation?
So I can speak for camp. This past summer, we run eight weeks of summer camp.
Okay.
That is a fee-based camp. Then with, we also offered, I think, this, this summer, because it was new and we're still trying to rebuild, we did offer about half in scholarships. So we actually worked with Victor and kids who maybe were on the Cubs after they've been invited. Then we looked at kind of the next tier, and we offered scholarships to our camp for that as well.
Okay, so is this the, I guess then, I'm just trying to confirm whether this is the camp where like we're looking at academic and cheap, no?
Not summer school is the ELOP. That would be that.
Got it. So there's summer school and there's camp. Got it. Okay, that was what I was wanting to understand. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you over the presentation, and also special thank you to our community service specialists. I've spoken before at board meetings about our family's experience, similar to Victor and Maggie. And I think, you know, going beyond just access and translation, having a face of relationship, building trust, actually building community like we've done with all the initiatives around community schools. But I know trustee Trent and I have been in meetings, you know, entirely in Spanish for two hours, and we understand all the kind of barriers and points of friction. And to have folks like you here who could really help guide these families and guide these children is just something I'm especially proud of to be a trustee in this district and to see that we're actually investing in those types of relationships and resources. So thank you all for everything that you do, and I love the stories that you share. I think, to be honest, we should have more conversations with you because you are closest. This is the folks that we're trying to serve, and so whatever we can do to make that a more regular thing, not that you need more things to do, but we love whatever we can do just to get that perspective because I think it's where we draw a lot of pride in the work that we do on behalf of our students. So thank you all. I did have some questions, specifically on the extended learning pieces, so I did want to ask. Also, Tiffany, I want to thank you in particular for helping us triage that crisis we had right at the start of the year. I think that's when we first met, was when we were running around trying to figure out how we're going to solve that for our parents. So one of my questions is related to that. I think looking ahead, the campus swap as a College Park parent is something a lot of us are thinking about. And in terms of not running into a situation we did, you know, two months ago, do we have a sense of what the extended learning program on both campuses will look like after that transition? There's a lot of moving pieces, but is that something that we've laid out or have a sense about?
Yeah, I could kind of answer that question. Currently, the two sites are working with their communities to organize themselves and start the planning and kind of those pieces. We are going to be holding committee meetings with both. I know College Park has assembled their planning or their movement committee, right? And then ELOP, you know, College Park has made headway into that. As we continue to hold these meetings, we are going to be kind of thinking about all the after-school planning. I know for Fiesta Gardens, because they're building in a lot of after-school enrichment programs through the community school grant in their case, these, they're, they're going to be moving over to, to the new campus as a part of the swap. So the short answer is yes, we are going to continue these after-school programs.
Do we have a sense, I guess, for parents who are planning for extended learning for next year, when typically this will roll out, would it be Q1 of next year typically, or when we expect to have more clarity on that?
I, you'll probably have a lot more clarity toward the end of this current calendar year. That's really where we start making those kind of. Yeah, plans, because we, a lot of the after-school programs have to be kind of ironed out, you know, a good, you know, four to six months out, right? And so, you know, we're hoping to have a lot more clarity to, you know, by the end of the calendar year, if that's.
That's really great.
Just to add on to that, the enrollment for after-school programs usually starts in December.
By then, we will have a.
We should have some, some more answers.
That's great to know. And then on that related note, so with the annex decline, I definitely agree. I think some of that flexibility and might have been part of it. I guess, how much data or insight do we have into that? Because I know when I was like the annex program previously, we spoke to a lot of different parents, and some folks talked about whether pickup time issues or other types of concerns or programmatic concerns. Do we have a good sense of why people choose either opt out or who people previously won't leave?
Yeah, it's not really, it's not the need. The need is still there and the desire for EUNX. It's the, we, the staffing. We need to hire the staff, and it's, it's been difficult. I will say, last year, HR did an amazing job with their career fairs, and I was able to get a lot of staff from there. So the hope is, you know, I think I've talked to them, and we're going to do some targeted focus on, on classified staff, and we're going to do that again. And I also, another thing that has helped us is the high schoolers. So a lot of them, not a lot, but I usually, this year I've gotten three, and I'm expected to think to get three. They graduate, they go to CSM, but want to stay. So that has been a big help as well. So the decline for them, I mean, it's not really programmatic. It is mostly the staffing, and I have to shrink or reduce or partner with YMCA or another to help fill the need as best we can.
Got it. And then that kind of leads into my next question. So we had a lot of questions about this at College Park with that partner organization that we had. But a lot of parents were asking, how do we select, whether it's YMCA or others?
I should get your way.
How do we select our partners for the specific sites? In terms of like, is it a, you know, typical government RFP-type process? Is it, what does it typically look like?
Yeah, so a lot of the vetting process has to start at the district office. My department, myself included, with collaboration with our superintendent, we meet with after-school partners, and we're actually doing this for our community schools and just to vet them, make sure that they have fingerprinting in, that they're legitimate, that they have a good reputation, and that they ultimately, as, you know, as you mentioned, that they have the staffing to sustain the program. So it really starts here, when a lot of input from the sites, for sure. Because if there's a program, you know, I think we've run into situations where, you know, a community member, a family, you know, they've heard of a really good program that we may not have been exposed to, and turns out it's a great program, right? So it's just a matter of, you know, kind of communicating between site administration and district leadership, and then we get the vetting process going as soon as possible.
Got it. Because I know we've gotten questions about whether the extended learning at the New North Central Campus will, for example, have a Spanish immersion component, similar for the Mandarin immersion at the New, I guess, what will be in the Fiesta Gardens location. But also in general, parents will comment that they'll know another school has a site that doesn't just do homework support, but also does art and STEM. And they always ask, well, why did we, you know, why does this site have this partner? That site has that partner. And so I think just having some transparency into that process is helpful because we do get a lot of questions from folks here from other parents about, you know, some phenomenal program happening at a different site. And I think they're always very confused about what that process looked like. And I know we're kind of reevaluating those moving forward. I was going to ask also, so if the ELOP funding was tied to pandemic response, do we have a sense of when that will sunset? Are we talking about budget? That was exciting.
We're hoping it will.
We're hoping that it's be a long-term, sustainable funding source. I think it's had an incredible impact across the state. I like to hope that it'll continue. Even do this work.
Who knows?
Yeah, right.
But really remarkable, I think, the impact it's had. So I haven't heard of it, an imminent sunset, so.
Yeah, with our budget, it's always tricky. That's a level. But I do know this is universally that parents want, that everyone wants to see. We'll see how long we can sustain that. And I'm sorry, I know the last thing standing between us and Fabrik. The last thing I want to ask was actually about community schools. So given those resources and how that kind of fits in, how does that, I guess, change our like extended learning perspective for those sites? But just maybe even district-wide, I guess, how does community school plug into what we're doing currently?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, what's great about the community school process is that it's creating kind of a role model or bringing enrichment after-school programming. And even more deeper into that, that kind of analysis is a lot of the programs that we're bringing in, where, you know, we, what we have right now is that we have like existing programs like BGCP, Boys and Girls Club. We've got the annex. So we already have kids in the after-school program. What we're trying to do with community school programs is that a lot of the programs that will pull smaller groups of kids to do actual enrichment activities, right? And so we're, we're building like a pool of vetted programs that the community school steering committees will then be able to review and decide and, 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 you know, make some of their data based on their assessments internally. They'll be able to select which ones they want to move forward with. And I think what's great about that is that we'll have these vetted lists that can be applied at other sites, right? It won't be just limited to community schools, right? So if there's, you know, funding levels that we can apply at other sites, we'll have that opportunity and flexibility to consider those programs.
So I guess if a site already has a NEX program or ELOP program, but is also a community school, is it going to be, I guess, a replacement? Is it going to be supplementing?
So part of the community school, that's a great question, trustee, is that in accepting and receiving the community school grant funding, we cannot supplant services or programs. We can only enrich, bring, you know, bring on top. So we will never do away with a current program to bring in some other one. It's always going to be an enriched, an extra, an added piece, like.
That's correct.
So we're really, when we say enrichment programming, we really mean enrichment, like something beyond what's currently happening.
I had a few questions. One question is, when you think about, when we think about like all the kids that need services after school, are we, do we feel like we've got everyone covered? Especially at our schools where there's the largest need, are they in something? Or is there like a list of people that?
We're doing, I can't say that we have everyone covered, but this is where Claudia and Margarita come in. They're amazing. They make the connection. They listen to the stories, they, you know, and then they come, they'll come to me, and they'll come to Victor and try to find the best program. You know, we're serving, I, I'm pretty, every program I think is maxed out, as far as I understand. And we're always looking to hire, I was, you know, I, I would say that's not, every need is not met, but we, you know, when we know there's a need, I'm looking to hire at Laurel so that we can, we can fill that need.
And then just on the financial side of things, because this, the, the revenue and from all the different sources, does it cover all of our costs in this, in these programs, or are we like?
So the annex and the ELOP are two separate things, but the annex is not, the annex is balanced and ELOP is balanced. And that's just the way to say it.
And then that just brings me to my next question about the AM care at some of the schools has like three kids, four kids. Is that like the best use of?
So it's, it's kind of a tricky, tricky line, right? So those three kids really, or four kids, those parents really need it. But the other part of that is those employees work eight hours. And so we really, we looked at and we continue to look at, you know, the eight-hour piece and what is the best way to utilize those staff members who need eight hours to make it work for their family and the income? And we've done options where we've moved them from ten to twelve, and they've worked at a school site and helping a reading teacher for a couple of hours to see if that, that has worked. We had one last year who worked in preschool to provide extra support there. So we're looking, always looking at, at ways to make, to maximize the use. It's unfortunate because those three families have no other option in the morning. And so it's, it's this kind of tricky, you know, Meadow Heights comes to mind. One of them is a teacher in, like, San Jose, and so they have no, and one's, and another site is a speech pathologist, and one of our sites is a, you know, so it's kind of this fine, fine balance that we do, we do revisit and look at, at best-case scenario and best options.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was more curious, like, is there more outreach? We can, like, can we get more kids in there? Is there like nobody else that needs it in the morning?
Yeah, so Sunny Ray, for instance, those are all non, ACIS does not cover morning care, and I think there's twenty-nine at Sunny Ray, and they are all scholarship and based on attendance and the need to be at school on time. And so I reached out to the principal. So I do, I do work with them, and that's also where I'll, I'll go to Marina and Claudia and say, you know, and it really was focused on the afternoon care, but now, you know, I'll probably come to them and say, let's go and, you know, does Meadow Heights? And I'll reach out to the principal. Are they having some people who are having attendance issue in late? So yes, we, we can definitely work on that.
Yeah, it seems like if we're just, like, ninety-eight percent of the cost staffing, and so we're already paying for the person, we could get another fourteen kids in.
We're, yes, we're in the process. It just, it takes some time, every phone call.
Thinking about that, and you guys are doing the work for that. And that was all my questions.
So, okay, so I just, so I'm, make sure I'm understanding that. So, okay, so I just saw, I'm, make sure I'm understanding that they were using annex to also basically try to address like chronic absenteeism and.
It's academic and, and economic need.
Okay.
And so if there's, you know, not so much absenteeism, but tardiness is affecting their academics and usually that's what we're seeing. And so the principal will come to me and then I'll go to my community service workers or we'll look at the data and, and then determine to, you know, to offer a spot. So yes.
Okay.
So tardiness and academic, you know, we do look at those.
Yeah, I mean, because I saw that the numbers at Sunny Bay are quite large compared to the other schools. So maybe, yeah, if we could do that at some of the other,
Yes.
the other schools, that would be great.
Lead is having a, um, one, uh, affair they invited me to. So I'll be going to that and offering care and then, Meadow Heights, embarrassing.
Okay. Um, shall we check with public comment one more time? Uh, anyone in the room? You all partnered and participated. So I feel like, um, anyone on Zoom for public comment?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, any, uh, final thoughts? And we can, um, adjourn.
I have one comment.
Oh, yeah, please.
I think that, speaking about the morning here, I think that there is something, it's just that maybe some families felt that they couldn't attain, didn't afford it at times. And I think that through the O P, we're seeing more of a flexible unity between annex and, you know, and our programs. So we're working together to like identify, uh, academic, so we can, you know, like recently we, we had some spots at Bayside Annex and we had some spots at another school where we needed to fill them. She came to us to look for people that do need it, really need it and we can fill it. And so I think we, I'm glad to hear that we're going to be doing that with morning care. There is a need, but maybe the families can't afford it or think they can afford it. So they don't access it or they don't ask. So if we, if we start working towards that, then we can fill it for sure.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for everything you do and just thanks for being here and sharing this information. Adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the motion, trustee. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned at six twenty-two P M.
Less than an hour.
My team, we're not on break yet, okay? Celebrate tomorrow. I need y'all tomorrow for P A day. We'll be running all over. That's true. Be like, so anyway, regardless for me.